Welcome, everybody. I now call the February 13th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the Agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting Agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the City Clerk calls your name.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorns?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kirk?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, mute your microphone when not speaking, and for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Are there any changes to the Agenda? Seeing none, move on to public engagement opportunities. We've got the Park at Bothell Landing conceptual design. You can help shape the future of the park. The survey window is winding down, and you can provide input by February 18th. You can apply for a Bothell Board or Commission now through February 23rd. That window's open, too. Make a difference and apply online now. No experience necessary. Next up is public comment. The City has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the City Clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the Clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk, do we have visitor comment?
We do. Mayor Thompson, thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to note that public comments shall be limited to the topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. When your three minutes start, the light at the dais will turn green. At one minute left, it will start blinking, and at 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow. We received a couple of written comments, the first one being from Clayton Graham, who wrote regarding AB number 24-027 and the Covell's land use application. And we also received written comment from Joanne Harkinen, who wrote regarding AB 24-027, the Covell's land use application. First up on the list to speak is Mac Carter. Which I, are you, there you are. Is that, are you Mac?
Yeah.
No?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah. So, first of all, I haven't been here since last year, so thank you for the work on, during December, to go in to get the missing middle passed. I've since gone and applied for going and getting a building permit put up for my property to go and build an extension on my house so I can go in and put in ADU. The problem I'm coming up with is the affordability issue of the process, in that the City is requiring numerous amounts of things that really don't make much sense as far as trying to go and make something for my family. It's requiring new frontage, which, from what I read on the bylaws and things, is not required because of the scope and the size of my project. The request for drainage from the engineering, also, the imperival surface isn't the same size as what's required. And I'm even getting requests to go in to scope the city sewer from the main upstream to the one that's downstream, which is not my property, and I believe I actually pay monthly to go and have that maintained and serviced. A scope going from my house to the sewer to the four-by-six would actually make sense for the extensions and things going on. And I'm actually reaching a point now to where I'm literally going and looking at getting an attorney to go in to advise me on the wording in the bylaws and the regulations with the city to make certain that I'm reading it correctly and that the City's reading it correctly. And to say the least, the process is very disappointing. I literally received an email with a blurry picture from a satellite on the issue of the frontage to go in to, because my complaint is that there's not enough space for the street to go in to do it because of the way that the city has built the road and allowed over half of the right-of-way to be taken up by the homes across the street. So, we can barely go and get 24 feet if we go, if we bring it all the way to the telephone pole with a curb. And then, if we were to go and put in a sidewalk, well, because of the slope that goes down on my property and all the others, it makes for a sidewalk that's impassable on either end, and it's kind of a dangerous place to go and put it. To say the least, there's a whole lot of frustration that I'm going through on this. I'd really appreciate if the council could go and possibly go in to, you know, help in some way, bring in some advice. It'd be very nice. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Clayton Graham. Mr. Graham, if you can hear us, go ahead when you're ready.
Yeah, am I coming through okay?
You are, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for Cathaway, and greetings to Mayor Thompson and the city council members. I'm sorry I couldn't show up in person tonight, but I thank you for the opportunity to address the council about one of your Agenda items on the study session specifically. My name's Clayton Graham. I'm a land use lawyer at Davis Wright Tremaine. I'm based in Seattle, but I've actually done projects around the Puget Sound, including Bothell. I've worked with city staff on sound transit matters, redevelopment of the Seattle Times, printing plant property for the Times, and many housing developments for private clients in your city. My comments relate to Agenda Item 7B, which is actually a comp plan amendment and rezone proposal from my clients, the Covell's. Unlike many of my other clients, the Covell's are not developers by trade. They asked for my help and decided to ask for this rezone when a neighbor of theirs, the Drews, submitted an almost identical request to the city. The Covell's property is likewise adjacent to property within the existing downtown sub area, and to be clear, it's already close to existing multifamily developments as well. And in our view, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to allow the Drews' proposal to move forward without the Covell's or vice versa. Our more detailed reasons are explained in the materials in your Agenda packets, which I believe also include a letter response that we submitted to city staff earlier today. But at a basic level, we feel strongly that future development of these two sites should move forward under consistent zoning and ideally with shared access with the property itself owned by the Drews. My understanding is the council either has or will grant the final approvals for the Drews' proposal, which included similar redesignation requests to the Covell's, which would allow denser housing development on that site. The Covell's are essentially asking for the same treatment as their neighbors' request. But now that we've looked at the Agenda materials for tonight, it looks like city staff are suggesting that the Covell's proposal be put on hold for now. And, you know, of course, we're going to continue working with the city on this regardless, but I'm here tonight to just respectfully urge the city council to keep the Covell's proposal on the docket for this cycle. And again, it makes little sense to spot zone the property next to the Covell's with a new designation without also including my client's property in that redesignation.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Next on the list, we have Ruth Burris.
I came before you in December, I think, and I'm just here to remind you about the situation with mobile home parks and especially with senior parks, just to reiterate some of the differences between us and other renters, so that as you look at rent things next, or land uses next month, you'll have some of these things more fresh in your mind. So, mine is a mobile home park where I'm a resident of 150-plus units. We own our homes, but we don't use, own the land underneath, which is quite typical of mobile home parks. When I bought, just to put it in perspective, when I bought six years ago, at the time, I bought my house for $60,000, and if I had gone to a park that you own the land itself, it would have been another $100,000 minimum for that privilege, and I needed to keep my funds more liquid than that. But what happens with us at my park, where it's a senior park, and a lot of the homes in there are quite old, so they're not at all mobile, mobile homes, and the people are largely not mobile either. And so, we buy these with the intent of being good citizens, using our money wisely to be able to stay in our homes as long as possible, pay our own bills and all that kind of thing. What we're expecting at the end of this month is a notice from our landlords with a $200 increase in our rent, which is 30% this year. Last year, they did over 17%. So, when you do the math, if you look at the 13 months, it's a 50% increase. And with people who are older, their funds are largely like 2000, 2001 retirement funds, and so they're not going to have gone up by any means $200 for anything in that amount of time. I see, I see, I have some flashing, so let me see what else I need to say. What we do when we live in these mobile home parks is build community, and that's a really important thing, especially as you get older and people pass on, and, you know, kids are busy and they don't come and visit you and things. So, it's important for that to be able to stay in place, and I think that's the main thing. So, if you could just remember that we aren't very mobile, we are long-term residents and plan to be that. So, we need your help in being able to stay that, otherwise, we're going to be homeless, many other people.
Thank you. That is all I have signed up for this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Please step to the podium, state your name.
Hi, my name is Dick Paylor, and I'm here to speak about the multifamily tax exemption that was approved by the city about two and a half-plus years ago. I don't know if any of you know it, but to the best of my knowledge, nobody has applied to use that. And there's been, since it was approved, to the best of my knowledge, there's never been a staff report coming back to you to tell you that nobody's ever applied to use it. I could be wrong about that, but I think I'm right. And I wanted you to know that the reason nobody's using it is because it's overly restrictive to the point that there is no incentive for a private developer to take advantage of that. And I also want to point out to you that it's the easiest tool you have to get affordable housing in the city that doesn't require a public subsidy. There's a tax exemption on the improvements once those improvements are built, but it's, you're not giving up any current tax revenue from that. And I noticed, the reason that I came tonight is because I noticed you have a presentation from Arch. And I'm not anti-Arch, I support what Arch does, but they are in the role of advising the city on, in MFTE. But with all due respect to Arch, they live in the world of either government-owned housing or highly publicly subsidized housing. That's the vast majority of the work that they do. And it was on the advice of Arch that you approved the MFT ordinance that you have. And from my experience, it was because they were seeing everything through the lens of what they work on every day. But for a privately funded project, which would contribute affordable housing by taking advantage of the MFTE, again, like I said, it's almost, it's like the lowest-hanging fruit. You have a lot of words in your housing strategy planned for the city about the need for affordable housing and so on and so forth. There's been a lot of staff time put into developing that, and I just think it's really unfortunate that through the MFTE, there have been zero results. And so, I would really encourage you to perhaps take that up again on a near-term agenda. At the time that was approved, or there was a developer proposing to build about 180 units right across from the campus here, and they laid out the terms that they needed, and they were ignored. And now, there's no project, and again, nobody else is using this, so I would encourage you to take it up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paylor. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? That's all I have. Mayor Thompson.
Next up, we have reports. City manager report is up first. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and we do have, I'll have a quick update for you tonight, and then we'll have two staff briefings related to upcoming items, followed by a visit from our Parks and Recreation Chairperson and staff liaison. First up, for awareness, wanted to share with council some upcoming action that will be taking place with the Sound Transit Board of Directors, anticipated from what we understand from Sound Transit staff in March of 2024, and it has to do with system access funding. In, as part of the two Sound Transit packages related to bus rapid transit, both an S2, which is what we will soon experience along the 405 corridor, and then the third package, which is along 522, there is some, an allowance for station access improvements to improve the access and safety for pedestrians. As I mentioned, Sound Transit staff will be taking these to present to the Sound Transit Board in March as part of an official recommendation. The city has been working with Sound Transit on these projects, and there's, how this works is Sound Transit provides funding to communities to do the work in their own jurisdictions, and so the city responsibility would be to ensure the delivery of the projects in exchange for the money. And then, they do, Sound Transit does have a capped contribution of what they're able to support. So, there's some risk that I want to acknowledge on that, is that we are getting funding for projects, and if there are any overruns and delays, then there is potentially a contribution from the city that would have to go to make the projects complete. If the estimates are correct, these projects happen without any financial contribution from the city. Staff has reviewed the scopes work, estimated budgets and schedules that would need to be accomplished for these tasks, and does feel as confident as anybody can be about construction projects, but with the acknowledgement of these are all anticipated to be completed in 2027, and the estimates are factored in for inflation of construction projects for 2027. There are two of the projects, the ones related to, the first two that are on the screen here, pedestrian improvement 104th, which would be bringing in just over $1 million, and then a $70,000 contribution for 104th bike improvements as well. These two projects are currently anticipated in the capital facilities plan that was adopted by council in the last budget cycle. Again, we'll revisit that as part of this budget cycle as well. And so, this has been on our radar, this has already been approved by council, and we would presume then, of course, that the funding mechanism of having Sound Transit pay for it, that seems like an easy ask. What I'm here before you tonight is for awareness to let you know that there's four additional projects that are currently not articulated in our capital facilities plan, and that is a Canyon Park on-ramp crossing, Brickyard Park and wide driveway crossing, 116th Avenue Northeast, and 160th Street intersection, and Brickyard 116th Avenue sidewalk. The total additional fundings for that would bring the total package of funding to about $4 million from Sound Transit. So, what staff's recommendation is that we would accept that, all these projects are consistent with things that we would envision, they just weren't in the CFP because there wasn't a, they hadn't made that list, and there wasn't the financial commitment to them. But with the change in use and having the bus rapid transit line move in, it's consistent with our goals of improving pedestrian access and safety. Again, with the caveat that we then do take on that work, so that is work that staff does, and we take on some risk if there's an over, if the projects go over. Next steps is, reason we're bringing this today is we found out the timing of this and the final confirmation from Sound Transit just last week, and it was after Packet publication. So, in the spirit of no surprises, wanted to make sure council was aware of this, so you didn't read about it for the first time in a Sound Transit Board Packet. That didn't seem ideal. And so, please know that this will go to the Sound Transit Board meeting. We need to give a head nod to Sound Transit as staff on the 16th of this week to let them know that we're comfortable with that, and they'll be publishing that. So, again, wanted to surface that here for the council and for the community to know that that's an investment that Sound Transit is considering. If the board were to approve that package, then as a next step, the council also would approve accepting that funding. So, you will see this again. So, ultimately, if the decision is that, you know, actually, I don't think that that is the direction we want to go, you will have that opportunity. And then, as we update the capital facilities plan, which will be worked on with the council over the summer, and would include these projects and then adopt it with council in the fall, you'll see it again. So, wanted to put this on your radar. We do have some staff here to answer questions, we could also do follow-up, but mainly, this was a FYI, so again, once the action takes place with the Sound Transit Board, it's something you're aware of. That'll pause.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Thanks for the update. You had mentioned that staff had looked at accounting for any potential, like, overruns, and I, it just made me wonder, in the last few years especially, we've seen just like, sort of, record overruns, and we're not the only jurisdiction by any means, but has the way we've calculated that potential changed and been updated?
Yeah, the modeling is based on how Sound Transit is currently modeling for their projects and what the costs would be. So, again, there is an aspect of there's a crystal ball effect in this. So, while, like, I think as we look at the funding for each project, you can kind of calculate the risk of scalability to what the city might have to contribute. So, again, that's $70,000 for bike improvements if that went over, like, even if it doubled, our CFP will accommodate that. Some of the larger projects is the ones that carry the more risk, but at the same time, too, of having a dedicated contribution, and the fact that we can also look for additional funding sources to augment if there are overruns makes that seem like we can be ready.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious about that.
It's a great question, because you're right, there's not a day that we read about a construction project in the news right now that says that it's substantially under.
I think we're good.
Okay, so we are going to move then to, the first of the two staff briefings, these are somewhat related, and as council will recall, back in December, you had two comprehensive plan amendments before you to consider. So, first up, I'm going to welcome our senior planner, Rebecca Sammy, to the podium to give you a preview of the code amendments coming before council soon on downtown transition affordable housing overlay provisions. With that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca.
Turn it on. Okay, now it's on. Just have to push the right button. Good evening, council. I'm Rebecca Sammy. I'm a senior planner here in the Community Development Department. Some, I think I've met some of you, or at least seen your faces, so hello and welcome. Tonight, I have a briefing for you in regards to the downtown transition affordable housing overlay and retaining wall code amendments. I like to refer to this as DeTahoe Part Two. So, just to give you a little bit of background, this project was initially initiated, was initiated in October of 2021, when Dave and Connie Drews made a comprehensive plan or docket request item to not only rezone their property from R9600 to the downtown transition with the affordable housing overlay, they also had included zoning and develop, they had included development regulation code amendments to allow greater building heights that are incentivized with a link to affordable housing. In addition, there were also code amendments related to retaining walls and a few changes there. So, just kind of to move you through where we've been, the project was initiated, was docketed in 2022. Initial planning commission study session was held in October of 2022, and a few others in 2023. In March of 2023, city council decided to pull apart the comprehensive plan amendments, or, excuse me, shifted the comprehensive plan amendments portions of the Drews' initial request from the 2022 to the 2023 docket. We finished out the first portion in December of last year of the Drews' proposal to rezone the property and to change the comprehensive plan land use amendment designation. So, that part has been completed. Where we're going next is we plan to bring forward the code amendments for a public hearing on March 5th before the council. Some of those code amendments do include, and these are the ones that we'll just apply to the downtown affordable housing overlay portion of the downtown sub area, it would be to add some language related to the micro-units to establish a minimum size. Those are the one type of units that don't have a minimum size associated with them at this point in time. Remove some references to single-family zoning, that's a trend that you've seen over the last year and probably will see again. And will also be, the amendments also propose an increase in building height when at least half of all the dwelling units created within the development are affordable to low-income households. So, there's the incentive link between increased building heights and affordability. In addition, there are amendments that would apply citywide to retaining walls, specifically to retaining walls that are internal facing to a project development. Those include some setbacks from the retaining wall to the structure itself, distances to property lines, and mitigations, mitigation for any exposed walls, so that any development or resident of said development isn't just staring at a blank concrete wall. So, at this point, just wanted to let you know that that's where we're at, where we've been, and where we're headed for March 5th, and that's all I have for you tonight.
I have a quick question, if nobody else does. Why is the minimum unit size something that we need to regulate?
I would have to go back and look at the notes. I'm picking up this project from a previous planner, so I'd have to go back and look at what the rationale was for adding that. I think it may have something to do with just hitting a definition, it may have something to do with funding, but I will give you, I'll look into it, and then I can come back to you guys.
Because it seems like one of those things, like, if somebody could fit an extra unit in, but it was 220 square feet, and it was a, you know, a microunit or a studio, like, having that would be better than not having that? So, like, I guess I'm just not sure why we need a minimum in terms of the definition of it.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the second staff report has been a bit of a journey, and so we're journeying to the table here tonight just to be able to answer questions. With us is our Community Development Director, Jason Greenspan, and the second update that is coming out of the comprehensive plan amendments from December is zoning code amendments for middle housing. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to Jason for a quick overview, and then I'll tag on a few items.
Thank you, Mr. Stanner. Good evening, city council members. Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director. As I'm sure you well remember, on December 5th of last year, the city council amended our comprehensive plan, which set the policy basis for middle housing development in all of our city's residential zones. I don't want to undersell the importance and significance of that step. This city is probably 12 months ahead of most cities in Kingstown, Homish County for amending the master plan language or the comprehensive plan language. The deadline technically, under HB 1110, is for at least King County, St. Homish County, the end of December of this year, and so we beat that by 12 months. So, those changes were based on requirements that stemmed from state laws known as HB 1110 and 1337, which were passed in May of 2023, as well as recommendations from the Planning Commission from 2022 that predate the adoption of those state laws. Now that the comprehensive plan amendments are complete, the city council is positioned to formally act on proposed zoning code amendments. You'll hear a lot about code amendments this evening. These amendments were the subject of a public hearing conducted and closed after numerous public comments on July 11th of 2023. No additional written comments on the proposed amendments have been received since that public hearing. These code amendments would expand the range of permitted housing types on lots owned predominantly for residential uses and increase the number of housing units allowed on each of these lots. First, regarding housing types, the menu of available options will expand in areas that have typically been dedicated the menu of available options will expand in areas that have typically been dedicated for one dwelling unit per lot. And those could include duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhouses, ADUs, courtyard apartments, or cottage housing. Second, the number of housing units permitted per lot will increase in areas that had traditionally been considered single-family. Up to four units per lot would be allowed citywide if at least one unit is deemed restricted as affordable housing. And up to four units per lot would be allowed within a quarter-mile walking distance of our major transit stops. In other circumstances, at least two units per lot would be permitted. Just want to emphasize that there are residential zones in Bothell where higher densities than these are already permitted, and those higher densities would remain in place. In fact, we have at least 2,000 residential units that are either under construction today or are in our permit process, and the bulk of those residential units are multifamily high-density residential units. Staff has reviewed the zoning code that was part of the July public hearing for consistency with state law, specifically HB 1110, and the guidance that was published by the Washington Department of Commerce in late January of just this year, about three weeks ago. We have not identified the need to make any changes to the zoning code as proposed. Some questions have been raised about the Planning Commission's recommendation of four units per lot, which was not directly tied to HB 1110's affordability requirements or transit proximity standards, given that their recommendation predated the adoption of that state law. Guidance published by the Department of Commerce does not clearly address how cities could effectively adopt zoning codes that exceed HB 1110 densities with all housing types while remaining in compliance with state law. For instance, it's not clear how to increase the base density of two dwelling units per lot while also maintaining compliance with HB 1110's affordable housing requirements. Additionally, as you know, we are finalizing the first draft of the 2024 comprehensive plan and our environmental impact statement report that's going to be released this spring. These drafts presumed compliance with baseline HB 1110 density requirements. Further increasing residential densities above those HB 1110 requirements at this time could have impacts on the draft plan, and especially our ability to effectively meet statutory deadlines by the end of this year. Accordingly, it staffs a recommendation for the city council to take action on middle housing code amendments as written by March 5th. These code amendments can be included in the next city council packet. Once adopted later in 2024, the comprehensive plan will include specific implementation strategies, including a housing action plan that can prioritize enhancing middle housing options even further. And as we have throughout this entire process, community development staff is going to stay in close contact with Department of Commerce lead staff on all future options for practical and feasible housing production strategies, including potential options for increasing densities and affordability. That's a mouthful, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I'm going to jump in really quick, too, and thank you, Jason, for the, for the update. And again, for, also for the idea of making sure that we're having both of these updates here, because there's a little bit of gulf in time between December and March, and wanting to make sure that people are following along in the process. Well, what Director Greenspan noted is that we have received no official comments in addition to what, what was presented in that, in the public hearing. We have had questions. So, as you'll recall, council, back on June 13th of 2023 is when our director and the deputy director first presented a matrix, I think it was attachment four, I remember it well, a matrix of where there was anything that was anticipated from the Planning Commission recommendation that the city had been following, and where there was conflict with what we were seeing in terms of House Bill 1110 and implementation. So that first introduced, one of the flags was around this affordability component, which the director just mentioned around requiring it, to get to, that fourplexes were allowed throughout the city, primarily within proximity to transit, but then also if any unit was made affordable. And that, again, was different than what the Planning Commission had, had been envisioning, which from the beginning had been around for, for units throughout the city. So that's a change that was what was then presented in the, in the public hearing. We have had questions persistently around, is there a way to get back to that original vision? And so what we've been looking at is, is that, like, we were waiting, awaiting the direction from Commerce to find out exactly how they interpreted that. And again, I think the interpretation confirms of the, the application of the law as written would be for our size jurisdiction is that you get to four outside of transit zones if one is dedicated to affordability. We have been exploring if there would be other options and having discussion, but there is complexity with that. But I do want to just acknowledge upfront of that, that is something that we're looking at. We want to find the right balance between interest of not delaying further. This is something that we've, that we know that people in the community have, have learned a lot about, and there's a momentum to that of the outreach and that sort of thing. And the longer it takes, the more it's almost like you're almost starting over. And I know, I think we're right on the precipice. And as the, as Jason mentioned, we're ahead in many ways, and I think there's support for this. We also, again, we've heard comments today of, there's other things that we need to do in our land use code to match the intent of what we want to do for middle housing, and making sure that our code then conforms with the realities of this. So there's more work to do, and we need to start being able to get on that. So with that, though, too, I do just want to acknowledge, and we'll open it up for questions of, and I anticipate there's some interest in saying, well, what are some options we can do? I think we don't have a perfect answer tonight, but I'm happy to answer the questions as best we can. With that, I'll turn it over to council.
You did remind me of one additional clarification. When we were receiving the guidance from the Department of Commerce, we were really looking for any elements that could help us reintroduce some of the pieces of the Planning Commission recommendation that were referred to that we didn't feel completely squared with 1110. In particular, the original Planning Commission recommendation would not have middle housing options applied to all lots in the city. It would only be applicable to those that were part of a, a major plat, a larger subdivision. The code as we've written it makes it applicable everywhere. And we're seeing if that guidance would allow more of consistency with what the Planning Commission recommended in that space, and it didn't really change anything. So we're hoping to continue to work with Commerce and understand what some of those additional incentives could be to encourage middle housing to be included on, on some larger plats.
Nobody else is going to go. I'll go.
I'll go.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for this update. I really appreciate you. Trying to explain the complexities of kind of the back and forth that we're experiencing with Commerce. What I think I hear you saying is that you're recommending a two-step approach where we can adopt Commerce guidance and then plan for exceeding Commerce guidance in the future. Is that a simplified way of summarizing what you said?
I think that's a fair way of characterizing the message I'm trying to convey, in that we have something that we know will comport with 1110 now, but that does not preclude us revisiting and thinking about additional incentives and options. Once this isn't so fresh off the presses in terms of that guidance, and I think Commerce themselves isn't quite sure how to provide guidance to cities yet in this space.
Yeah, and that's my next question, is, once Commerce has a chance to develop the answer to that question, will they be able to come back to us with, and for cities who want to exceed this, here's further, further guidance? Do you, do you think they're working on that?
I would love to say that Commerce would come up something aspirational that way, that provides a menu, and that's possible. In all likelihood, they'll, they will wait for cities to propose something and react to that. That's not necessarily a bad approach. I think it lets cities customize something that is tailored to their cities' needs.
I think one thing I would add on to that, Councilmember Aldrich, is that as we, here we are in the second half of a short legislative session, but before we know it, we're going to be working on the legislative agenda for the next two years. I think these are the types of things that we also need to capture in terms of feedback of where, from our experience, and again, of being ahead of where maybe there's some potential revisions that the legislature might be willing to consider. I don't know that they would. I mean, but I think the practical implications of implementation and the challenges would be good stories to tell.
Okay. So, maybe we want to aspire to be a good story to tell. I, I like good stories, but my thought is, if Commerce wants to wait to react to cities' proposals, then we would basically have to put together a proposal that they could react to. And, and I think our Planning Commission might have the energy to, to do that. And so I'd love to hear what my colleagues have to say and what they think about, about this kind of two-step approach, especially since it is maybe a, a longer process than we initially anticipated. So, thank you.
Thank you. City manager, you kind of read where I was going with that. I, in my time on council, we have built our legislative agenda and sort of responded to bills. I haven't seen us go out and, I haven't seen someone just write a bill to be like, hey, here's a bill, please do it, we need it. But is that an option available to us to say, you know, we want to do these extra things? If Commerce comes back and says, this is what you need to comply with this law, and there's kind of this gray area where we're not sure, can we propose a bill for next year, obviously?
Yeah, I think, I, we, if we could be working with a representative who is willing to sponsor something, I think that what, what I hear you saying is, is that early engagement. So we do start our legislative agenda early, but I think we could even start earlier than that of, let, let the session end, give them a breath, and then as soon as that's done, we start knocking on doors or making phone calls and start saying, here's the challenge that we see, and we want to talk about how to, how to work on this. Yeah, I think we could be part of seeing if there was interest in picking up a bill.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll say that's true regardless of the outcome of, like, you know, I think that's a good, a good way to think about it. Again, if we're proactively doing things can build that vision for our community of what we want to look at, whether it be middle housing or other laws, if we're seeing things that have unintended consequences, it's great, those are great conversations to have. And we have good relationships with our, our representatives. I'm thankful for that, and I think they'd be willing to listen.
Thanks. And now you've told seven people who like to get things done that we can write bills, so.
All right, I'm going to jump in, because I don't see anybody else. You know, last year, after 30 some-odd public outreach points, we were ready to vote on four units by right citywide. We asked to take some time to do some additional public outreach, because the outreach that we had, that we were expecting to happen hadn't at that point in time. And now we're over a year later, and I don't believe we've ever given direction that we want to back off of four units by right citywide. And I guess I don't understand why we have done our EIS on something other than what council's given consistent direction for, which is four units by right citywide. And if we have to do something that, if we need to do something different than that to comply with state law, like, I'm interested in that, but I want it to go further than that, because part of not delaying includes doing what we've been telling the community that we're going to do, and what we've been doing that public outreach for, for three, four years now. And, like, I just, I want to see at least by right fourplex with no restrictions in every lot in Bothell, like we were about ready to vote on a year ago, or a little over 13 months ago now. And I just, I, how can we get there as soon as possible without any more delay? Because I'm, I'm sure you guys probably don't relish having this conversation for the 38th time in front of us, any more than we do.
Well, it is the benefit of being new, Mayor. No, we don't have quite that many. So, yeah, so what I want to clarify, so in your statement, you talked about submitting an EIS. So for these land use actions, we are, we've submitted an EIS review as well as SEPO review. And it's based on the assumption of the version of code that went forward in the public hearing. And again, I, I do recognize that while there was every attempt made in that June study session and the public hearing to highlight where the changes were, I think that it became, it became clear to me later in the fall that the full implications were not clear for everyone who'd been following along. I do think we do have a lot of passionate followers of this, not just on the DIES, but out in the community as well. And I think the full understanding of where things were at on that got clearer later, despite, you know, a solid attempt of trying to point out where the, where the discrepancies were. So that's kind of how we got here. The question then is, is that based on the, the requirements that we have to have before we can bring something final for adoption is, you know, what would it, are we talking about a big adjustment or a small adjustment? For clarity for council, one of the things that, that has been discussed or proposed and contemplated is that as you read through the law, it's in, for anybody who's looking at this or wants to make note, it's RCW 36 dot 78 dot 635. There is then requirements for jurisdictions based on size. And so we fall into a category of 25,000 to 75,000 population, and that's where this guidance come from, that we've been guiding to. If you, if we go the next tier up, there is an opportunity of where I think we could accomplish, it, not could, it would accomplish what, what you're asking for in terms of being able to get to four units by right with additional incentives that would also award affordable units. So it could get up to six units. So that is something that we could contemplate in doing. What I don't have a clear answer for you tonight is, is that a big change for that SEPO review in the EIS, or is it a one where we could say that the difference would be a quicker review? I don't know. I don't ever anticipate anything to be fast, but that also means that sometimes you can be pleasantly surprised. So, you know, Councilmember Aldrich mentioned, summarized well the option of what is before you of moving forward with the version we've had. We know that is ready, March 5th. Council could have that for consideration, have your discussion, and vote. To bring another option, there could be some delay. And what I can confidently tell you is, is that the totality of that is that a couple of weeks, is that a couple of months, or it's longer. And I think that would help understand, too, if we're going to have to sacrifice something where we want to go. So I'll be upfront with you on that. That's something that we, we absolutely have to look at, though.
So I guess what I would suggest then, and, and we chatted a little bit before the meeting about this, you know, we, we have to try to notice a public hearing, and like, hopefully, we could do it by the 5th, but maybe not if not the 19th. It's, it's up in the, it's up in the air. So I will just say as soon as possible, rather than a date, with the, the options that kind of we have in play. You know, just adopting what the state passed for our city size. A second one would be to do what we have been telling our community for years we have been considering doing, which is four units by right, period, just, that's it, in the city. And then the third, per other conversations we've had, it seems like there might be problems with fourplex by citywide, by right citywide, complying with House Bill 1110 because of, it basically overrides the affordability requirements. And that's where I believe you just mentioned, we would jump up to the next tier. So then that would be the third tier. So can we notice a public hearing for those three options? And, and then, over the course of the next few days, kind of figure out what the ramifications of those options are?
Right. So, and I will amend, the, the middle option that you mentioned, I think something that would be important to note, is that from our reading and from the guidance that we have from Commerce, is we would know then that the clock was ticking on that eventually, if we adopt what we'd been planning of offering for without a unit of affordability, we could potentially be out of compliance. So we need to look at what the implications of that are as well. If there is the will and direction of the council, we can do that. And again, we won't notice a public hearing that can't happen. So we would need to look at, what are the options, what are the realistic options? And then, the, the worst-case scenario is we'd be coming back to you on March 5th with the option of either adopting what has been proposed, or giving us the alternative direction, and we would have that better spelled out at that time.
The, so, and to my understanding, we're a little ahead of the curve on this, because Director Greenspan mentioned that earlier, because, you know, we're, you know, we've been working on it for years before the state passed a bill. If we passed fourplex by right citywide, like we've been telling our community that we've been going to do for, for the last few years, if we were out of compliance with House Bill 1110, we wouldn't have to come into compliance until the deadline for, for that, correct?
Yes, I believe that is true. I'll, you know, again, I'll give you a little caveat as your city manager and not your city attorney, but I believe that would be true, yes. Because we do have, the, the law allows a period of time to get into compliance.
Yeah.
That would have been true. So you mentioned, we thought we, that things were close to vote about a year ago.
Yeah.
And if we were And if we would have, then we would have still had to, you know, we would have still be relooking at this. We would still need to get under compliance of the state law. There would be a similar effect now, is that we would be, we would be adopting something with the knowledge of 1110, which we didn't have a year ago, but we would still need to get under compliance, that's true.
But in the meantime, like, people could start to build projects that we've been, you know, they've been waiting on us as we've been telling them we're going to do this process, and we've held elections, and we've talked to people about what we want to do through that process. Like, even if it's just a year and then we have to come into compliance, like, I think it's really important to do the things that we are going to tell our community that we're going to do. So like, if we pass it now and we know that we're going to have to amend it, and if that's bumping up to the next tier in city size, that's fine. But just, I don't consider doing exactly what the state said in the minimum to be finishing the process that we've been working with at all. Like, I want to finish what we have told our community that we are going to do and not just sort of take the off-ramp of the state law.
Understood.
I would offer just one other comment when it comes to the process, when it comes to the comprehensive plan. We will have the draft plan as well as the draft environmental impact statement report by April, which makes certain assumptions about baseline HB 1110 for a city of our size. But that is not the end of the comprehensive plan process. That is going to initiate a comment period and feedback. There will have to be public hearings at the Planning Commission regarding the preferred land use pattern in the city and densities. So we expect that there will be shifts between the draft and the final preferred.
Okay.
So there could be an opportunity to make that shift at that time in terms of the assumptions that are going into the comprehensive plan. So that could also be a way to move forward with the way the code is currently composed and then set the stage for additional incentives and additional density, but not wait very long.
Okay. No, and I would love to shift that assumption essentially back to four-plex by right citywide as soon as we possibly can in that planning process. And if other council members want to weigh in on that, I'd love to hear what they have to say as well.
Yeah, I will echo this comment. It's frustrating to have been involved with the city this long as Planning Commissioner and now on council and still be considering these ideas. I think that it makes sense to kind of move forward on all fronts as quickly as possible. And if that means coming forward in March with multiple different, kind of hierarchy of different levels, I would, I would put my weight behind that as well.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I appreciate all the context. There's a lot of context. And I think the one thing that I want to make sure of is when we come back to talk about this, the part that I can't get in my head not being a planner is, I really want to understand what the impacts would be of either passing this HB 1110 compliant bill and then revisiting, like, in the interim, like, are we going to, I guess, some of this is crystal ball, so bear with me, but like, are we going to see people waiting even longer to see what we pass next? Like, is that, you know, it seems weird to pass something and then be like, but we're going to look at more soon. I also don't want people who maybe just want to build a duplex have to wait longer when they're not waiting for more, right? So I guess just helping us understand the potential consequences of that action, but also of passing just four-plexes by right and then, you know, having Jason's team fight it out with Commerce after the fact. So just to understand that, because I just don't have a good grasp on all the path that could lead us to. So just more of a talking us through that. And I wanted to concur with the Mayor and Councilmember Kurt's comments. It's, we want to do a lot of good for a lot of people, and it's taken a long time, but I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, too. It doesn't mean that everyone hasn't been working super hard to make this happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldrich?
I think maybe my former comments are in the same vein of what we're hearing here, that if we have to do it as a two-step, like, let's take the first step and then get ready for the second. Sorry, I've been a dancer my whole life. We're just going to do dancing metaphors. Thank you.
We'll follow your lead.
I'm not seeing any other hands up. Do you guys feel confident on direction?
Yeah, let me just summarize. So we will, we're going to do some homework here to see what it would take to bring options. I think that's always a good place to be, is when you have options to consider. If there is the need to then move off of March 5th, as you mentioned, Mayor, and re-notice or anything like that, we will let, we will let council know. We will also communicate that out to the community. If there is a possibility of doing something else, we'll bring multiple options on March 5th. That's also what we'll do. Within that, we'll look at what are the viable options, including what Director Greenspan just noted, noted too, of that some of the work that we may need to do in terms of doing the homework to get to, what would it take of scaling up, could be something that is informed in the comp plan as well. So we'll look at all those options and bring back something that's clear in our next meeting.
Perfect. Well, thank you. We're looking forward to it. We're relying on you guys to help this, help get this done for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, ooh. Are you supposed to introduce the next one, too? Okay.
I will just let you know that Blaine Land is going to be joining the Parks Chair at the podium.
Fantastic. Did you?
I'm just going to make a reminder that if anybody has a committee report, I believe there was a, well, maybe we skipped that.
Oh, we were not there yet.
Okay, thank you.
That's next.
Sorry.
Next up, we have Blaine Land and the Chair of our Parks and Recreation Board, Whitney Nigobauer, to give us a Parks and Recreation quarterly update.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. As a staff liaison for the Parks Board, I'm here tonight to introduce our chairperson, Whitney Nigobauer, to give an update on the Parks Board. She'll be providing a general update on two projects, the capital facility projects, one being the Park at Bothell Landing conceptual design, and the other being the inclusive playground project at Cedar Grove Park. In addition to those noteworthy projects, she'll also be telling some of the priorities and programs the Bothell Parks and Recreation Board are part of. So, Whitney?
Thank you, Blaine, and good evening, Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and council. Thanks for having me again this evening. As Blaine mentioned, I'm Whitney Nigobauer, the Chair of the Parks Board, and I'm here to give you a quarterly update. As you all know, this is a really very exciting time for parks. Just last week, you heard an update from Parks Planning and Development Manager, Erin Milner, about the Park at Bothell Landing project. Members of the Parks Board participated in receiving feedback from the community at two recent open houses. We saw many of you there. This opportunity to get out and directly hear from the residents of our community was really appreciated by the board. These experiences immersed us in the park, shaping our understanding of community feedback regarding the park redevelopment project. While city staff and the consultant site workshop is gathering robust feedback during this learn phase, the Parks Board wanted to provide some initial high-level feedback on some of the common themes that we heard and discussed in our recent meetings. The Park at Bothell Landing is truly a gem used by all ages and centrally located in the heart of our city. The park is accessed from many different directions. Its location along the river also offers close connections with the natural environment. Some of the challenges include crossing 522, linking downtown with the park itself, doing that safely. Uses of the park space are multifaceted as well. From water sports to walking in nature to, quote, "hear the birds and clear my head." From learning about Bothell's historical past to contemporary community gatherings, and from young kids learning and teens playing outside to senior citizens taking their daily walks, this park is both an escape from the city and a place where everything is happening. Current park features that we heard from our community, that they currently come to the park to experience, are the playground, amphitheater, historical buildings, and trails. New park features that seem to be repeated included a splash pad, skate park, community gathering space, better trail connectivity, including a bridge or tunnel across 522, easier water access, concessions, dog park, interpretive and wayfinding signage, and bike and kayak storage. Again, the consultant and staff are gathering detailed feedback from these open houses and through community survey and interviews with stakeholders, which will paint a much better picture. There is also still that survey online for anyone in the audience or at home that's listening and wants to provide feedback. The Parks Board has been sharing this survey through our individual networks and offering suggestions to staff on outreach. The Parks Board is incredibly supportive of this project and looks forward to working collaboratively with council. The second major project we've been engaged on is the inclusive playground project. May recall that the playground at Cedar Grove Park will be replaced by an all-inclusive playground in partnership with Harper's Playground. The Parks Board was engaged in a workshop with the consultant just this past quarter and the community, and we will continue being involved in the process. We're excited to see a new asset for our community, but also working to discuss creative ways to engage additional subject matter experts and stakeholders into the discussion. We have been and will continue to seek guidance from those who will use the park, particularly children who utilize wheelchairs or walkers for mobility, physical therapists who may use the area to support their young clientele, or caregivers who themselves may experience a disability. We are finding these types of partnerships with local community organizations to be incredibly fruitful, and will continue to build upon these as we grow our parks network. Finally, there are two openings on our board. If anyone listening is interested, there's still a little bit of time to apply. So thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Well, Whitney, so many things to thank you for, but specifically the parks, your contribution to the parks and your fellow board members, please thank them for this work. While you were describing the Park at Bothell Landing, I don't, is Mr. Paylor still here? I'm trying to think of who was around. At one point, they were discussing a flyover off of 405 that would go right over the slough and disrupt all the peace that's at the Park at Bothell Landing. This was a few decades ago, and I'm very grateful that did not happen because we have a gem that's been preserved. And it was lovely to hear you describe it and get a mental picture. And I'm very excited to see the adaptive playground come into play. Last summer, I took a peek at the Marshall Playground down in Vancouver. So I'm really excited to take a sneak peek at our adaptive playground in Bothell. So thank you for all your hard work. We're better because you're part of Bothell.
Well, thank you very much. The Parks Board is just, I can't describe our level of excitement to be working on these really big projects. And just like you mentioned, the Park at Bothell Landing, in the open house, we all got this feeling that, you know, the park is a really special place to sort of disconnect from the city, but also access it so close to the city. So it's really an amazing service for our community to have that park there and to have both the nature and community gathering space to really make it a special place to be.
Can I just say that like, the thought of a flyover from 405 over Bothell Landing, like, I had, I did not know that was a part of the conversation a couple decades ago, and that was incredibly triggering to me, and I'm so glad it didn't happen.
Yeah, it sends shivers down your spine, doesn't it?
Yeah, oh my gosh. Councilmember Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here, Whitney, and it was really exciting to hear some of the initial feedback that we've gotten from the community for Bothell Landing. I'm wondering if you could go into more detail about some of the partnerships that you have been, that the Park Board has been exploring on how to bring, is it just feedback that partners are able to offer, or are there other opportunities there?
So, yeah, we actually have a subcommittee that's working on outreach, and some of the things that, you know, we've been discussing in our meetings is, you know, how do we partner with groups, you know, like the Alyssa Burnett Center or the North Shore Senior Center, or there's many more out there, and do it in a way that's like really authentic and that really builds support for each other? So, you know, that's sort of where our conversation is going and just finding the appropriate ways to do those things, that's sort of where we're at right now. But yeah, look forward, if you have, you know, additional feedback or collaborations on that, would love to hear it.
Great, thank you. And yeah, we can follow up.
Okay.
Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the updates. I really appreciate just the breadth of knowledge that our Parks Board has and the way that they apply it, just going, it feels like above and beyond. It's great to see, and I know you're proud of your board, but definitely, second thing, Councilmember Sorensen, please let them know that we are, too. Great work. I, in thinking about some of the outreach stuff that you mentioned, I too am really curious about that, and I'm wondering if you've been able to leverage, maybe Gabby or I'm going to Becky, sorry Becky, somebody to help with that who might have those relationships there? Has that sort of, working with other staff been explored at all?
We've had some discussions, and I don't really want to speak for staff collaborating with staff, so maybe Blaine wants to talk a little bit more about that. But yeah, we have a lot of really incredible resources within our own city, so being able to tap those.
The other thing I was going to suggest, too, is Sorensen Early Childhood Center. It's near-ish, I'm trying to think it's near, I guess they're both near to me, which is why I think they're near, but that's another place in Bothell that might have a lot of thoughts about, especially the playground at Cedar Grove, I would think, so, awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it sounds like they're going through their own process of having an inclusive playground, so.
Very much, yeah.
Yeah.
I would just say thank you so much for serving in this capacity on the Parks Board in addition to everything you do with Whale Scout, like, it's a lot, and we really appreciate it, and we're super glad you're involved. So thank you for this, and thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome. Love it.
All right, next up is council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. I'm going to preemptively.
You're looking at me like I have something. In fact, because of, I thought you had mentioned it earlier, and then we hadn't gotten back to it. Anyway, because many of us were at AWC last week, I was not able to attend the North King County Coalition on Homelessness, so I do not have an update from them. So my apologies for that. But if you want to talk about AWC, I guess we could.
I don't know what there is to say that's relevant, but I bet Councilmember Dodd will give it a try.
I actually have a NUSA update.
Ooh.
So I went to my first NUSA board meeting, and we got updates from King County, DCHS, about the Crisis Care Centers levy. So Bothell and our partner cities are already Racer buddies, as I said to someone from Shoreline at AWC. So we are working on opening our Crisis Care Center in Kirkland, and they, the folks that are running that are in talks with King County as well, because there might be some good lessons learned that we can share, since it's very similar. And so we got some great updates from that team, from the county, from Brooke Butner at Racer. The other thing I wanted to mention, just to everybody, is next, not next week, tomorrow, we are having our sort of planning session. So if you have any thoughts that you want to be shared with NUSA, please let me know, just maybe send me an email, and I'm happy to surface those ideas as your representative on the NUSA board. So, yeah.
All right, everybody's shaking their heads when I make eye contact with them. So no, as we mentioned a couple times, just so folks in the community know, we went down to Olympia last week for the Association of Washington Cities City Days. It's an opportunity for us to advocate to our legislators directly on behalf of the city, as well as just sort of connect with the greater conversation that's happening from local electeds around the state and engage with the Association of Washington Cities. So it was really productive. We had City Manager Standard down there with us, we had some folks from staff, Catherine was there, too, and it was, it was a good time, but it was also a productive time. And I don't know when to say this, either in this or the next one, so I'm just going to say it now. I have, and I've got some notes here, I have had a few people reach out directly to me yesterday talking about similar concerns to what we heard in public comment regarding development and having to replace not just frontage infrastructure, but a lot of the city's infrastructure. frontage infrastructure, but a lot of the city's infrastructure just in order to build a project. I've got a... I've got another meeting set up in a little over a week with somebody else that reached out about concerns that I don't know the details are, but it's something similar to that. Like, I feel like we should charge a hookup charge to hook up to our infrastructure. It's all... A lot of it's been sewer as well, like that's been kind of the main thing. And they're being asked to replace quite a bit of city sewer that isn't... Doesn't need to be resized. It's just old and needs to be replaced. And I don't know what we need to talk about or what kind of policy conversation it looks like to make sure that we aren't asking individual small developers to do our job, which is maintain and upgrade our infrastructure. Like, I feel like they pay a fee to connect to it. Would, you know, Boyd's talked to kind of about the... To buy into the system and like to connect to the system. Obviously, they need to take care of all that, but I don't understand why this seems to be pervasive and something I'm hearing about a lot. And I guess I would welcome, how can we have a policy conversation about that? Because if we pass a middle housing bill, but nobody builds anything because they have to replace blocks of sewer every time they build a fourplex, then we aren't accomplishing our policy goals.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we will bring back some more information about what's currently... What you're describing is part of the Bothell Design and Construction Standards, and was what requires that. I do believe that there are some contemplated changes enabled in order to implement post-middle housing, but we can bring back an update to review what the current requirements are, some potential next steps that are already in the works, and see if those comport to some of the feedback that council might be hearing, and we can... We'll get that scheduled at an upcoming meeting, at least as a staff report, so that we can get information out there of what does currently exist.
I'd love to have a better handle on kind of what exactly that looks like, because it seems like there's a lot of kind of extra policy stuff that happens that is really incredibly impactful on our policy goals, and I'd love to be able to set some guardrails around that so that building something in Bothell is predictable, like you can budget for it. Like, you can budget for, you know, building a house. You can't budget for what random things are we going to have to pay for once we get in the process, and I would really like to have predictability for people that do business in Bothell.
Absolutely, yeah. No, I do believe that everything that you've described is spelled out into our design standards, so we'll highlight what those say and then see if that aligns with the goals.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Next up is projected agenda discussion. Councilmember Dodd.
I... Another... I appreciate you bringing that up. I have another thing that I'd love to look at. I appreciated that Mr. Paylor brought up the MFTE today, because I've seen that be successful in other cities, and I don't believe we've had a project that I've found either, and I would love to know more about... It sounds like there was some developer engagement when that was first passed, why we... Why it was chosen to pass what we did versus other things, and now that it's been a number of years, what could we do differently? I do think that when we make a tax exemption, that is us giving a developer something, because they're not going to have to pay the taxes that we would otherwise collect, and there needs to be a public good from that. But if nobody uses it, then it's just something shiny in our code that doesn't do anything. So, I would love to revisit that.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
That's actually a question that I had on our ARCH presentation that's coming up, because MFTE seems like it would be a good tool. I know other cities have used it. When we shaped the MFTE, we wanted to make sure that we had, as I recall, and you can help me remember, a longevity to maintaining those units that they didn't quickly turn over to market, you know, at market rate. I think that's what drove our decision when we shaped it the first time, but I would love to have an assessment of... I'm like you, I don't think it's working here in Bothell.
Yeah.
Can we find out why? And Mr. Paylor had made the argument that it wasn't... It's the only tool that's not a government subsidy. I kind of think it is in that they're not paying a tax on it. It's sort of a subsidy, but it seemed like a great tool when we were first exploring it back in my planning commission days. So, can we find out how to make it work better in Bothell? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, the particular issue at hand for the developer that Mr. Paylor mentioned was the expiration date of the MFTE, and I believe we have... I believe it's a 10-year MFTE, and I think Shoreline does... Did we go 12? Somebody probably knows. It's whatever. I believe there was a longer term or forever or something like that, and I believe there's a couple jurisdictions around that do that. I did a little looking into it with some friends, and it actually has an impact on financing. It's not a matter of like, you know, 10 years isn't enough for the developer. It's they can't get the loan, and the numbers don't work if they know that that fee is going to be coming back in 10 years. So, I think it's a structural thing within the financing of building that we're running into that's a little bit of a problem. And yeah, I'd agree, it's something that I'd like to take a look at as well, because if we have a tool that's meant to get units built and nobody's building any units, then we should look at it again.
Yeah, thank you for doing the sleuthing on that. So, hopefully, it won't be too cumbersome of a project for staff to help us get a better perspective on it.
Sure, and I will confirm a couple of things that have been stated. It is correct that there has not been... While we've had some inquiries, there has not been a project that has taken advantage of the program. So, certainly agree, it'd be a good idea to look at it. I think what we'll do is, Councilmembers Zorn, you mentioned planning on asking a question of our ARCH staff. I think we'll also look at, to see if that's something that they can help augment with so that then, you know, as we're having conversations about middle housing and that sort of a thing too, that we're not splitting our time on those, but we'll prioritize middle housing and we'll get an update on MFTE on the schedule. And then, it is correct, just a quick thing, but we do have... Our code has two timelines, an eight-year and a 12-year. So, eight years for micro apartments, where there's 10% of projected units at 40% AMI. Other dwelling units are 15% of projected units at 60% of AMI. The 12-years then kicks into micro apartments as 20% of projected units at 50% AMI, and other dwelling units, 20% of projected units at 60% AMI. So, yeah, we'll certainly look at that. We can do some comparison of what other jurisdictions have done, because I do believe we... The council previously did tie our requirements to other jurisdictions in our area as well. There's a couple different flavors in the region, but we're not alone on ours, but we can also look and see what the feedback from those communities has been as well and bring something back to see if that's work that you want to initiate.
Thank you. All right, I would love to get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilmember Aldrich and a second from Councilmember Zorn. So, would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk.
Thank you. Please say yes or no. Want to call your name, Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurt?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, I'll cover.
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, next up, we've got a study session. Before that, we are going to take a 10-minute break. It is 7:20 right now by my watch. We will see you back at 7:30. All right, welcome back. Next up, we have Agenda Bill 24026. It's a study session, Presentation of a Regional Coalition for Housing 2024 Work Program, 2024 Administrative Budget Request, 2023 Housing Projects, and 2023 Housing Trust Fund Request. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, there's a lot of things packed into tonight, but it all boils down to getting an update from our representatives from ARCH, which stands for Regional Coalition for Housing. We are joined tonight online by Lindsay Masters, who is the Executive Director of ARCH, to walk us through some things that'll be coming back before you for adoption. Much of this is something that happens on an annual basis, and so we are getting updates. None of this is unanticipated, but want to get the details to you, and then we'll see what else we end up having conversations about. And we'll just note too in the introduction, and Lindsay, thank you so much for joining us, and I know you have... Oftentimes during this season, you have multiple council meetings in one evening, so whether we're your first, your second, or your third, thank you for joining us. And I will just note for context that during our public comment period, we did hear some... A request for the council to consider a review of our multi-family tax exemption or MFTE programs. The council later expressed interest in having a discussion, so we are going to tee something up. You may get some MFTE questions tonight too, but I just want to let you know that that'll be something that we'll be talking about how to bring back in the future. With all of that being said, context set, I'm going to turn things over to Lindsay to take it away.
Thanks so much, and happy to be here. Appreciate you accommodating me joining online so I could do a couple meetings tonight. I do have a presentation I'm going to try to share from my own screen, and hopefully it'll pull up for you there. All right. So, we have a couple items to cover tonight. As Kyle mentioned, these come to you each year for approval. One is our Budget and Work Program. I'll be talking broadly speaking about some of our priorities and happy to answer questions about any additional details in the work program, and then also the administrative budget, which is how we are funded to carry out all that work. And then, second, I'll be talking about our annual recommendations for the ARCH Trust Fund. This is the program that pools local funding from all of our member jurisdictions into awards to local affordable housing projects, so I'll give you some highlights from the process this year and a recap of those recommendations. Just as a reminder, ARCH has been in existence for over 30 years now as a coalition of jurisdictions in East King County that work together to support affordable housing through a range of shared strategies, both working together on housing policy and planning efforts, investing those local resources into affordable housing through collaborative efforts, and then our staff serving as sort of shared staff for all of your community's local programs, as well as providing resources for the public that are seeking housing opportunities in the region. High level, we're proud of the impact we've had as a coalition through the efforts of cities like Bothell. Jointly, we have invested in over 6,000 affordable units now in over 100 different projects that are distributed throughout the region. We have done a really great job of leveraging your local resources, over $10 for every $1 in local funding. We've also helped many jurisdictions to establish local incentive programs so that they can achieve some affordability in the market rate development that you see happening, and those efforts have collectively produced over 2,900 affordable units with many more in the pipeline. So, I'll just touch on the priorities that are called out in our work program. It's a lengthy work program. As Kyle knows, we are often a little bit overly ambitious in what we're trying to achieve each year, so we do appreciate the help of our board to set forth some priorities. This year, we are wrapping up a strategic planning process that was started last year and hope to have some recommendations coming out of that very soon. We had engaged with councils throughout the process and had appreciated those who participated in our stakeholder survey, so definitely taking your input into consideration as we make those recommendations on future strategies. We also outlined a couple of related priorities. These have been intertwined in recent years, particularly because of interest at the state level and considering funding opportunities for affordable housing. ARCH has identified for many years the need for more dedicated revenue streams to be able to invest in affordable housing locally, so we have been facilitating discussions around that topic amongst our members, identifying potential legislative priorities for you to consider, and then working to see if we can coordinate efforts around specific bills when those come up. You can just see in the chart here, this is meant to illustrate statewide, we have far more demand for affordable housing resources than we have available funding. We are competing against the entire state for those resources at the state level, so it's often really a key consideration to make a commitment of local resources, and having those funds available at the local level ends up making a huge difference. We also took up a policy issue in the last year and developed some recommendations around how to address the topic of how rent limits change within affordable housing programs, so came up with some policy options for members to consider and would be hoping to work with each city to consider those in this year. And then, finally, I'm sure all of you are thinking a lot and are very busy with consideration around your comprehensive plan updates and how best to respond to state mandates around housing policies and zoning issues. So, we are endeavoring to provide as much support as possible to our members around that. We're forming... The process of forming a work group now to explore the feasibility of affordability and additional opportunities around affordability as cities implement HB 1110, and hope to come up with some good information and analysis out of that. And then, finally, we are continuing to monitor and steward all of the collective affordable housing that our members have created over the years in wanting to keep the... Preserve those assets and make sure they remain affordable. This chart here just shows you the growth in what we call the rental program, the ARCH Rental Program, which is all of those units created through programs like MFTE and inclusionary zoning programs. We also have a particular priority around helping the development of really important special projects, particularly in recent years, transit-oriented development projects on public land. We have a couple of really significant projects that are included in this year's round of funding recommendations that we're really excited to see moving forward. And then, shifting gears, just to talk about the budget. So, this year, we... The board did have a discussion and determined that we wanted to pretty much maintain current services and staffing levels while a broader strategic planning process played out and before making any recommendations on changes. We did have one exception to that, which was a request for some additional funding for legal services. We do rely on City of Bellevue to provide administrative services for us, and they identified a need for some additional resources there. Bothell's total contribution towards our budget for 2024 is over $135,000, which is 6% of our total budget. And with that, I am happy to continue the whole presentation and then take questions at the end. I could also pause and take questions on the work program and budget here, however you prefer.
Council, have any questions?
I did have one question. Back to Slide 4. You had different colored dots, purple and yellow or gold, and I'm wondering if you could tell us what the different colors denote?
Oh, yes. Apologies there. I'm going to see if I can do my best to remember. I believe the... I believe those reflect projects that are completed and projects... Yeah, and projects that are in the pipeline. So, the purple dots are projects that are still in development and haven't been completed yet, and the orange dots are completed projects.
Cool. Yeah, thank you for answering that question. So, that makes it really easy for us to know that the little purple dot there in Bothell is the, imagine, the Sammy project that's coming in. Yeah, cool. Thank you for that.
All right, moving on.
Okay. Happy to jump into the trust fund this year, so just starting with some highlights. Again, as I mentioned previously, the trust fund has supported over 6,000 affordable units throughout the region. I'm pretty sure this map includes projects that are completed in development as well. We have strived to support a diversity of projects, meet a range of housing needs. In the past, there have been some goals set around different populations and making sure we... populations and making sure we are providing opportunities across different populations. We're pretty close to meeting those goals over time in terms of projects for families, folks coming out of homelessness, senior and special needs projects. I like to include this, this slide because we often get questions about how the process works. And I decided this year I would just put a slide in to, to walk through it step by step. Each year, you as a city determine how much funding you would like to contribute to the trust fund during the year. So we don't set any kind of formula. It's really each city determining on a voluntary basis what to put in. We confirm those amounts in the first quarter of each year and then build our process from there, where we go out and we conduct outreach with developments, potential development partners and applicants. We get sort of an early sense of what the interest is in where we might see applications coming from. And then we formally advertise those funds in the second quarter. Occasionally, we're able to supplement those with loan repayments we collect through efforts to service the loans in past projects. And then we receive applications in third quarter and work through a robust evaluation process with our community advisory board. Those are volunteers who live and work throughout the Arch region that are appointed by the executive board. And they help us to develop thoughtful recommendations, often seeking to identify ways to improve the projects or provide feedback and raise good questions about the comment, about the projects. And then their recommendations come to our executive board at the end of the year for them to advance for year consideration finally in the, in the first half of the following year. So I like to explain that just because often we get questions about what exactly you're approving, whether it's the amount that's going into the pot for the next round of projects, or if it's funds that have already been allocated. So what's in front of you today are the funds that have already been contributed to the program, and we've developed recommendations around those. This year, when we went out and identified preliminary contributions to the program, there was around 4 million in funds available, both from current year contributions, some remaining funds from the previous year, and some additional loan repayments. We identified pretty early on that we were going to have a significant gap in resources from what was coming in. We had a couple of projects located in City of Redmond, and so I identified resources that the City of Redmond could also supplement into the, into the process. So we were able to make a total of over 6 million in recommended awards this year. The funding sources are broken down by jurisdiction in the chart and are principally made up of general funds, but also in recent years, the 1406 sales tax funds have been a more significant resource that cities are pooling together. So now to turn to the actual applications we received this year, we collected seven applications from projects located in Bellevue, Kenmore, Redmond, Kirkland, and then a scattered site project. The range of applications were from very small developments up to a 333-unit project. I'll talk a little bit about sort of highlights from this slate of applications in the next few slides. Most importantly, the affordability of the projects. We see this year, the vast majority of the recommended housing is going to be affordable to households with incomes no greater than 50% of the median income, which aligns with where we have the greatest amount of housing needs in the region and the largest numbers that we need to be planning for. We also were excited to see a significant number of family-sized units that are two and three bedrooms. We also want to just touch on, again, the emphasis of how far your local resources go when you put them into the program. This year, I mentioned historically, we've seen a 10 to 1 leverage ratio. This year, we were able to achieve an estimated $15 for every $1 of local funds. That includes dollars that are being funneled through the Arch Trust Fund as well as the Bellevue Housing Stability Program that Arch is administering for City of Bellevue. So we're able to bring in funding from the federal level, low-income housing tax credits, a range of private lenders loaning funds to the projects, and then other state, county, state and county resources, as well as some other miscellaneous sources. I'm going to summarize the recommendations and not walk through every individual project just due to time, but would be happy to answer questions about any of the specific projects. As I mentioned, we did have a shortfall in available funds to be able to fully fund all the projects that our community advisory board supported. But we did, they did think through sort of what, where, where we wanted to show support for projects, even where we couldn't fully fund them, and also tried to prioritize projects that are ready to proceed and needed a full funding commitment in order to achieve matching funds from other sources. So the 120th TOD Station Project is a really exciting project in Bellevue. This is our second award to that project. We previously funded them last year, again, with a limited amount of funds because of lack of resources. We also are recommending a full award for the TOD project in Redmond, and that's also made possible through the additional funds coming from City of Redmond. And then the other projects we have made preliminary commitments to, we expect to see these reapply, with the exception of the Emma McRedmond project. In that case, we believe through efforts coordinated with other funders, they may be able to complete their funding gap this year without additional funds from Arch. So we're hopeful that project's going to proceed this year. But the project in Kenmore, which is a senior housing project, and the Aventine Project in Bellevue, which is an acquisition of a project, a market rate project with some at-risk affordable units, those will have remaining funding gaps that we expect to see again. And then there were two other projects that were, I think, worthy of future consideration potentially that are encouraged to apply again in the future. I will stop there, but I would be happy to talk further about any specific projects or just answer other questions.
Thank you, Lindsay. A question about that last slide from, or in a general, about that last slide, not in the specific project. How much, like what percentage of funding do you provide? Or what percent of, what percent of the overall funding is, are those, for example, the, the recommendation for, let's pick Kenmore, you know, 250K, what percentage of overall, total funding is that?
For, for the specific projects, I'd have to do the math on the, for the whole slate of projects. So we're, you know, we're a 1 to 15 ratio that, which means our local funds are about 6% of the total financing for the project.
Okay, so 6%. And then the, 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 the project owner will need to raise that. Is that a, when you provide this funding, do they already have the other funding in place? Because I know, I see the request versus recommendation, and there's a big gap over there in, in some of them. Do they then figure out how to get funding from other sources?
Yeah, that's a, it's a very good question.
Could you go back to that slide?
In most cases, yeah. What's that?
Could, could you go back to the slide that showed the different funding sources and where they came from?
Yeah, I can do that. Let me make sure. There, oh, there it is. In most cases, Arch is the first funder to commit to a project. State, the state level and county level funders often will be hesitant to award funds to a project that doesn't have local support and local commitment. So we are, we are typically the first funder in. The exception to that is on, on this slide, there's a project that is coming to us already for the second time. That's the Bridge Project. And so we made that initial commitment last year, and that gave them the ability to go out and start securing other funding with the understanding that they were going to come back to us and to City of Bellevue. So they, we have a parallel recommendation there for some additional housing stability program funds from Bellevue. So it, in an ideal world where a project secures all its funding in one annual cycle, we would be the first funder in, and then other funding sources would, would follow from the low-income housing tax credit program, the state housing trust fund, and then funding from King County. Private sources are usually the last to come in. So those, those sort of follow the public sources.
Thank you for that. I have a, now even a higher level question.
Yeah.
There is a, the, the, the flow chart you showed earlier where it takes a year to, from the time a project is, yeah, this one, the process, it's like about a year, and then somebody might come, you might approve somebody, or the board might approve somebody, we agree, or, you know, whatever. And then they get some of the funding, it's like, oh, we, we only got 10%. Now we need to go and find other sources. Then it might take another year, maybe another year. Might take multiple years for an affordable housing project, any given, to, to come into fruition. But how do we accelerate the process? Because there's massive need. There's a previous slide that shows how there's a massive discrepancy of need, supply versus demand. And then how do we accelerate this so that we can start meeting that demand as a, I guess it's a regional question. It's not just a City of Bothell question. That's my, that's my question.
Certainly. I think that's a great, I love that question because I love the intent behind it. I think there's sort of, you know, at a regional level, this kind of, kind of comes back to the significance of dedicated and consistent and stable funding for the program. We are able to work with development partners to start early on in identifying sites and working with them to secure land opportunities when they know that that funding is going to be available. It becomes a much more challenging proposition when they know we might have 4 million in a year and that they know they're going to need to apply for more than that. We've had recent luck, for example, I think with Bellevue, because they have been able to take advantage of a 0.1% sales tax and now have a consistent revenue stream to be able to bring in more partners on the ground, looking for sites and being willing to invest time and resources into that. On the flip side, I think in, you know, what we're doing a lot of now and in the absence of a more robust dedicated funding source, is we are looking at site-based strategies where we can try to initiate development efforts when there's either a piece of public property that can be earmarked for affordable housing, or there's a nonprofit or a church-owned property that can be designated for affordable housing. So we are able to sort of initiate efforts that way and start to create some of the momentum towards putting a feasible project together. But to your point, I think what cities, you know, can do and what other regional partners can do is continue to try and identify where you can create more stable funding sources or advocate for those options from the state. That's why that's one of the priorities in our work program. And certainly, you can take a look at where you have particular pieces of property, how you can make those available for affordable housing in your community.
Lindsay, great answer. And I'll just tag on to localize this a little bit, too. Deputy Mayor, Lindsay's answer touched on a few things, but I would say that we're finding ourselves promoting the next legislative agenda already. But this is one where, again, there was some coordination from Arch in terms of making sure that there was some consistency among the member cities around what types of bills that we would support that had to do with affordable housing funding. I know there have been conversations in the last two legislative sessions down in Olympia around creating a real estate, a real estate excise tax that would support that. So those are some things like, that we can do in terms of an encouragement role is looking at what's, if those aren't the right means, what are the right types of funding mechanisms, if there is any? Those are conversations we can be part of. The other thing that I'd note is that, is that Lindsay noted, mentioned, is alluded to in the introduction, and I know we've been talking about it as well, is that Arch is going over the strategic plan. And part of what's been driving us is that feedback of how do we attain more affordable units faster? So related to that same question. And just wanted to amplify, in addition to what Lindsay mentioned about surplus property, we can look at that both from a standpoint of municipal or government-owned property. That could be, like, that can be coordination with school districts, that can be coordination with the county, but also then looking at what are some potential partnerships within the community so that when uses change or there is, you know, property that becomes available, what are the things that we can do within our code that would allow it to be something that could be used for affordable housing? So we'll, we'll continue to align the priorities here, the legislative priorities, and the priorities of Arch in coordinating those, because it is, it's a big lift for sure.
Hey, Lindsay. I had a question that I probably should have asked the last time it was open. In the first part of your presentation, you mentioned looking at different dedicated revenue sources specifically from East King County and some options that you'd been looking at. And I was wondering if you could go over kind of what some of those options that have been being, that are being discussed are?
Yeah, I'm happy to kind of talk about the past conversations we had. I think we're probably due to refresh some of those and, and get kind of renewed feedback. I want to say, a year and a half ago, we convened some focus groups and invited elected officials from all of our member jurisdictions to sort of get more information broadly about what are the current available tools that are on the books today and what are future potential options that the state could authorize. We had really good participation from all the members. Some of the existing tools, I'll, I'll try to rattle them off, off the top of my head. We talked about, obviously, the option for voter-approved property tax levies that are dedicated to affordable housing. We talked about tax increment financing as a, as a tool some cities have available and recent restrictions that were lifted around the use of that that make it a little bit more of a substantial tool. We talked about commercial linkage fees as something that can be paired with an inclusionary or incentive zoning program so that you are able to mitigate some of the impacts of new jobs created from commercial developments. I'm sure there's a number of others that we also covered. And then we also talked about prospectively, what are some future tools that you could potentially advocate for from the state. I do recall, and this is, this is why we're continuing to talk about this today, the most significant consensus around those tools, because we got a wide variety of feedback and thoughts on those, was that the real estate excise tax felt like the best nexus with the issue, with perhaps the least impact on communities and businesses within your communities. So we did develop kind of some shared language and talking points around that. There was a bill last session that many of the Arch cities advocated for that would include both a local option REIT as well as a change to the state REIT. That obviously did not make it through the legislature, and so there's a sort of revised version of that this year. We'll see where that goes, if there's a future opportunity to continue looking at REIT. We also talked this last year, again, invited cities to participate in a workshop around legislative priorities, and also got a lot of good suggestions around additional flexibility that cities could ask for with how you utilize REIT II, most likely. There's a little bit of a carve-out there right now for affordable housing, but it's pretty limited. So that's another tool cities were interested in taking advantage of.
Thank you.
Lindsay, thank you for the, the answers that you've given us so far. And I think just sort of as a follow-up to the deputy mayor's question, and seeing how Redmond has decided to give additional funding, what do you think the likelihood is, or how possible is it, that HB 1220 with the income target? possible is it that HB 1220 with the income targets will shift how cities commit funds to Arch? And will that become a conversation, do you think, that we'll be having at some point?
I, I've heard sort of comments around the edges and a little bit more from some of our neighboring communities in South King County who also participate in a coalition down there called Skip. I think there was concern that sort of there'd be a mathematical process where cities are discouraged from investing in joint regional efforts because they'd be most concerned with sort of accounting for and creating units within their own city limits. So there has been some work around, I think through the countywide planning policies and then some additional follow-up with PSRC to make sure there is, continues to be encouragement policies that are encouraging this subregional collaboration, notably because the county, both county and I think the state recognize those efforts are how you best maximize your resources and get the most affordable housing created within your subregion. So I, I think it has been raised as a, as a question and a potential concern, but most of the response, you know, from a policy perspective is that that's not the intended outcome and that continued collaboration, particularly around funding, is, is really encouraged.
Can I restate what I heard so I understand it correctly?
Yeah, hopefully I understood your question correctly.
I will, I will try.
Yeah.
I'm going to do my best. So the intention of HB 1220 was not to discourage collaboration. And so further collaboration would be, would continue. I guess I'm just wondering, does that mean that, could collaboration expand as committees, as, as communities commit to trying to hit their, their targets?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we, Arch has approached that different ways over the years. In, in the past, we spent a lot of effort trying to come up with what we called parity recommendations that, that sort of said, our collect, let's make a collective goal for the coalition and then let's figure out an equitable distribution of that based on the size of cities and their projected housing and jobs. And I think that had some efficacy and helped with sort of facilitate conversations around what cities might have as a goal for what you, what you put into the program. But it really kind of hit a ceiling in terms of what's realistic for you, or at least, you know, for, for certain jurisdictions when you don't have a dedicated funding tool, where you're just trying to find that funding in your, in your general fund. So I think that's why in recent years, we've spent less time around what should that formula be and more about how do you actually become equipped with tools to be able to raise some of your investments and respond to the, the growth and need? But I do, you know, I do like to talk about the additional contributions cities are making when they, when they do that, because we, we applaud those efforts, we really appreciate them, and I think they, they do help the whole coalition when, when individual members start to step up that way.
Okay, so I'm sorry if I'm struggling.
Okay.
I'm trying. So separate efforts, it, it's kind of a separate effort because it's regional, right? Every city has their growth targets that now belong to them, well, their, their income targets and then, but because Arch is regional, like, we'll continue the regional partnership, but it's sort of two different ways of increasing housing rather than, it's not something that, like, these efforts can be combined and become better as a result.
I, I mean, I think I would say in all the places where we're seeing individual efforts like that, Arch is the glue that is holding it all together. You know, we're, we're working with Bellevue on the resources they've been able to secure. We are going to be administering the funds from Redmond. We're going to be working with Issaquah this year to administer some of their sales tax funds. They were the other city in the Arch Coalition that was, was able to adopt that. So we're, we're trying to create as cohesive and coherent of a funding ecosystem as we can in, in East King County so, so that when there's a project in Bothell, there's going to be a robust program that comes to support that. And then in a year where there's a project in Kenmore, a year there's a project in Kirkland, we also have the resources to do that. I, I can see how from the outside it looks like it's this patchwork of efforts, but we really do try to coordinate it carefully and thoughtfully to maximize use of dollars and make sure they're getting out the door quickly.
Oh, absolutely. I've, I've seen that in Arch's work and I would expect that to continue. And yeah, it will be Bothell's turn again. I, but I'm also seeing how these two different efforts of, of increasing affordable housing stock may not necessarily be able to work together. So, if I'm understanding correctly, so I'm trying. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I could be missing some of the thought there, but I think the local efforts are really important and the regional efforts are really important, and they do, they can, they can work in, in sync and they can enhance each other in some important ways.
I think we're about tapped out of questions, Lindsay. Is there, is there anything else you need from us?
Just certainly your direction on the two items tonight?
Yes, I think if there's no objection, we'll plan on bringing forward the two items for adoption at the next meeting.
No objection from me.
All right. Thank you, Lindsay, really appreciate your time with us.
Yeah, you as well. Have a good evening.
All right. Actually, you're, you're introducing these now.
I mean, we can, we'll be efficient. We have, we do have a total of three study sessions tonight. The second one is the consideration of a proposed 2024 docket. We'll be hearing from our community development staff on this one. I will note that, again, this is a study session format, and so I, I know we're used to that, but I also just want to reiterate for anybody who's watching that no action is intended for tonight, but staff will lay out what has been received through the docketing process that would lead to potential comprehensive plan amendments for 2024, the recommendation and other considerations. With that, I'm going to turn things over to, to staff. So we're joined again by Senior Planner Rebecca Sami, as well as Community Development Director Jason Greenspan.
Thank you, Mr. Standard. This evening, we're here to present to you the docket for 2024. You might be aware that in the state of Washington, every city is required to revisit its comprehensive plan every 10 years. So the Bothell Municipal Code provides an opportunity for, on an annual basis, to consider applications from interested parties for amendments to the comprehensive plan, amendments to our code regulations, and also to request rezonings. And that's recognizing that there is quite a gap oftentimes with establishing comprehensive plan and that it makes sense to revisit certain policies during those interim years. We're now at a point where we were doing a comprehensive update of the, of the plan which was last adopted in 2015, but we still do receive docket applications. We have a cutoff every year of October 31st by our code, and we receive, and I think in 2023, I think we received, I think up to five applications in 2022, I should say. In 2023, we received one application. And so Senior Planner Rebecca Sami is here this evening to go over the substance of that request and present you with staff's recommendation for how to proceed.
Thank you, Director Greenspan. Hello again. Thank you for the good introduction that highlights quite a bit of what is in our analysis this evening in addition to the agenda bill that we have here. So rather than just read to you what I have, I'd like to just kind of summarize what, what the proposal is. So as Director Greenspan stated, we did receive one suggested docket request. It is a combo request from the Covells. Their property sits just north of the Drews property, which I think you are all fairly familiar with its location. It's just, sits west of Popkin Stadium and just north of the Drews property off of 96th in Thor'sk. I almost said 95th. Their property is, the Covell property is accessed off of 95th. Basically what they're asking for at this point in time, they have three requests, as I said, they would like to, they're seeking a comprehensive land use designation map change from R9600 to DT. They're also seeking, or they have suggested code amendments to just sections that deal with the downtown subarea. So that's the Bothell Municipal Code in 1264. In addition, they have also requested a site-specific rezone. The site-specific rezone is not before you this evening, as that is a quasi-judicial matter and would be dealt with separately and apart from the docket request, similar to how those were split out for what we did in December with the Drews property. At this point in time, due to staff is not recommending docketing this particular request, we have done some initial analysis based on the application materials that were received. So we do, we do recommend declining further consideration and not placing it on the final docket for 2024. As Director Greenspan noted, we are in the middle of a comprehensive plan update in which we're evaluating citywide what is happening with our zoning and our densities. And rather than approach the downtown subarea in a piecemeal fashion, we feel that it would be better to approach the downtown subarea in a holistic fashion and reevaluate at a future date and time and include this particular parcel at a future date and time in a reevaluation of the downtown subarea. That's just kind of addressing the, the comprehensive plan designation change in and of itself with regard to the suggested development regulations. Upon review with the initial application submittal, we also don't recommend moving forward with those. As presented or described in the application materials, these appear to be very akin to what is upcoming, what's known as the Drews Request, or as I stated earlier, DeTahoe Part Two, which is coming before council on March 5th for hearing. Very similar in their initial review as far as increasing height limits and some linkage to affordable housing. So we're, we're asking that, kind of wait and see what happens with that before this would move forward. And that's just based on the initial application materials. We did ask for additional information from the Covells, seeking clarity with regard to their land use change in addition to the code amendments. That information was sent to them in December with a requested response date by January 15th, of which we only received an initial response this morning. It's about 40 pages long, and I have not had time to fully digest that. So we, that's just part of it. So at this point in time, we are, like I've said, recommending, not recommending any further action and not docketing these particular items. So what we're asking from the council tonight is direction and a discussion about what you all think, and if Director Greenspan, if you have anything to add.
I would just add that when we did appear before City Council, when Kirsten presented some of the future land use map alternatives a few months back, that map really showed what we were trying to approach the city with in terms of a high-level policy map. And this particular site and property was identified as a medium-density residential land use designation. And so the assumptions for the comprehensive plan in terms of our transportation element, land use element, utilities, all have moved forward with that. So again, as Rebecca mentioned, we're suggesting it rather than piecemealing an approach to looking at the downtown subarea and its environs, we have the opportunity to do that as one of the first, if not the first implementation step once the comprehensive plan is adopted.
If you'll allow me to summarize, just so I, I understand, it sounds like that what they've requested is work that is, we're already doing is going to be done indirectly through other means this year, through DeTahoe Part Two and through the comp plan?
Partially. I would, I would say partially there. Based on the application submittal materials that we received, it wasn't clear what the proposed code amendments were. There's a difference in the heights that they're requesting, but we, we were seeking further clarity on that. And the additional clarity would come through if you chose to, if the council chooses to move this forward with the docketing or hear more, that would be something that we would flesh out.
Okay.
As far as the work with the comp plan, and feel free to chime in, we're, like Director Greenspan said, is we're in the middle of the process of reviewing the different zoning types, and this area has already been identified as, as potentially moving into residential medium-density. It doesn't necessarily mean that, that that work would change their designation. It's still under review. So does, does that help clarify?
No, I, I think that makes sense. My next question was about why they would need a site-specific rezone in addition to, and if that was instead a, like, if you don't do that, then could you do this? But it doesn't, it sounds like we just got that answer this morning.
Yes, but I would like to clarify. So currently, it's, Bothell's a little unique in that the future land use designation map and the designations that are there, that are listed on that map in the comprehensive plan currently, our current comprehensive plan, and our zoning map are one in the same. So if they have to go through the process, the step-by-step process, if you recall from December, that they need to do the comp plan change first, and then they could do the site-specific rezone.
Okay, perfect. It's going to be nice when we change from that. I'm, I'm looking forward to that. No, I, I mean, just, I'm, I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation on this for all of the reasons that you, you already said.
Can I ask just a newbie question? So the 2022, we got five applications for the docket, and last year we got one. Like, what, what drives, who applies and why? Just a general.
It's hard to say what, what motivates an individual to request a comprehensive plan amendment or a code amendment, or request a rezone for that matter. In many cases, from the 2022 requests that we received that were part of the 23 docket, we had recommended, I think it was last March, that many of those be folded into the comprehensive plan update, and we're doing that, at least with two or three that we received, and that's being considered. And the timing was such that that worked. This really, based on the timing, wouldn't work with kind of rolling it in. But I, I can't say I fully can answer the question about what motivates somebody. I think, as I had mentioned, because there's a 10-year gap oftentimes between a full comprehensive plan update, circumstances change for property owners, environmental conditions, market conditions, that really may motivate somebody to request a change and not necessarily wait the full 10 years.
Do you think with the new, the, the comp plan we're doing by the end of this month, so there'll be some people applying probably in October anticipating something happening? Do you think this will reduce or change how people apply for comp plan updates? Like, if we anticipate what's going to happen based on previous?
I mean, it's an interesting question that I've been trying to wrestle with, to be perfectly honest with you. We have an application deadline this calendar year of October 31st for the 2025 docket. That will be, in a, in a way, it's a moot point because they would be requesting an amendment to a comprehensive plan from 2015 that you all will be about to completely update anyway. So that's why we're suggesting that this be one of the first steps in the downtown subarea plan update. That could happen probably the first quarter of 2025. I, I don't know if we will get requests this calendar year for next year. next year. I think we'll just have to figure out how to deal with them when we get them.
Can I, may I leap in? I'm waiting for other voices because I'm sure there's some great thoughts here. One, I appreciated looking at the Covells' homework they've done thus far. It was fascinating to read the slope studies and the research that they had done on it. I understand that there was still more work that, information they needed to gather that was gapping, lacking in being able to have a, have a full comprehensive look at what they were doing. I don't want to overuse the word comprehensive in too many different aspects and muddy up the waters. My impression is, and correct me if I'm wrong here, is that our comprehensive update is going to be more of a Gestalt, kind of looking at the whole organism of the city and what works for it, like traffic flow and environmental issues that may have been changing and that sort of thing. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And so I have a question that I want to toss out. I totally appreciate your argument here, and I have no problems with it. It makes total sense to me. My question is, when somebody wants to do a change, would we be doing them a service by saying you may do it the first 10 years or eight years of a comprehensive plan before our update? Because by the time it gets into the pipeline, things are going to be changing. So if you want to apply to make a change for a rezon, the time to do it is the first eight years of a comprehensive plan? Or is that squashing?
I think there would be a way to clarify our code ultimately, to encourage earlier applications during the process. We wouldn't want to stop someone during, like, during this time, because there may be circumstances where it is warranted. And I wouldn't want to imagine what those are. So I think there's a way to incentivize and encourage earlier applications. By that same token, we've toyed with the idea of perhaps discouraging applications the first or second year after the update. Given the effort that we're all going through, we don't want to have to immediately start changing it.
Right. Well, that went through my, you articulated it much better than my brain was putting it together, but that went through my head as well. I don't know that I have any more clarifying questions on that. And if we can tighten up and encourage people so they're not frustrated, because I'm sure the Covells are a little frustrated as well. But the reality is, we can't put the cart before the horse, and we need to have a process to this. So, but I do hope that the information that they gathered helps in the planning and directing of what we actually put together for their areas that fits in with the rest of Bothell.
I will echo my extreme excitement for putting the geotechnical logs in the packet that was fun to read. I, so first of all, totally concur with staff's recommendation on planning commission. In the past five years, we had to pass up a whole bunch of really cool or unique opportunities that people come forward to the planning commission and council to docket because we're going to do a comprehensive plan. And I love that. We're going to have this generational opportunity to revisit it, to go from scratch and build it back up. But I'm wondering, what communication strategies do you use with people who have submitted docketing requests that have been denied in the past to help them feel like we are listening, we have not forgotten about them, they're still being, you know, included in the process of comprehensive plan amendments? Because I would hate for an applicant to hear that, oh, we're waiting for the comp plan, and that was five years ago, and they haven't heard anything back. And I want to include their voices and their, you know, bring them into the comprehensive plan engagement. I'm wondering what kind of strategies you use as a department?
We, last year, for example, there were at least two applicants where we received direction from City Council to communicate directly with them to help them strengthen their application. Our code does not have a lot of clear direction about what needs to be in an application itself. So what we want to do is strengthen that in our code. In the interim, we've used this opportunity to provide feedback to applicants directly to strengthen possibly the planning arguments that they're making, link more to county planning policies, because our code unfortunately doesn't provide a lot of guidance in that space. So we've done direct outreach, and we can continue to do so. Because often, if a project or an idea may have merit, it's really just more the timing and a process that is an obstacle. And so we can help applicants strengthen their case.
Thanks.
Thank you. I was going to make a joke about the geotechnical report, but I'm just going to get to it. I agree with the staff recommendation as well. I think it makes sense to instead invite the Covells to really learn more about the comprehensive plan process and learn more about their project or what they're thinking, and does it mesh with, you know, how the comp plan is addressing that neighborhood? And just not try to do everything all at the same time, because that seems like a real bad idea. So I appreciate the recommendation and totally agree with it.
I will save my question. But I think this makes sense. I guess it's more of a comment that I had, which was, one of the things that I, one of the aspects of the comprehensive planning process that I really like is that when we get these applications kind of end of the 10-year cycle, it sort of gives us some, like, inspiration and ideas of where the next comp plan update should go anyway. It's informative, at least, and can shape some of the discussions that we have when we do the whole 10-year comprehensive planning process. And so I would not want to see anybody ever cut off from being able to apply because it was too recent that we did an update, or it's too close to another update. I think those ideas constantly coming in on a yearly basis make a lot of sense. And then we can do what we've done, which is encourage them to, you know, we time them in a way that makes sense. And so I think that what you're recommending here for this particular, this particular site, makes sense that we are going to be getting to those site, to that site, to that area in the very near future. And so it doesn't necessarily need to be on a docket to be able to address it. And so I'm happy to follow the recommendation. Thanks.
Councilmember Manki, did you have any questions? I want to make sure we don't ignore you.
No questions for me.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, I think the recommendation makes sense. And I'm also glad to hear that several last year's requests that were not put on the docket are being incorporated into the updates that are being made. I appreciate that.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got one more.
Yeah. All right. So third course. We do have one additional study session. In this case, it is a review of new and updated state building codes and related Bothell Municipal Code changes that we need to make. You're going to hear, there's a combination of, there's some things that are in the basically required category of International Business Code that said we need to incorporate these. And so staff will cover a little bit of what's in there in terms of our municipal code of Title 20. There's also some recommended changes in housekeeping items that they will also review. Again, no actions sought tonight, but the intended next step is to hold a public hearing before changes would be voted on, and that public hearing would take place on March 5th. With that, I am going to turn things over to our building official, Dave Swayze, as well as Fire Marshal Butch Noble. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. Did I not hit it? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you for your time tonight. Yeah, we're going to just highlight ours are much easier than what you've already heard. At least we think so. So we're going to highlight first that there's going to be a new code change coming. That's a state thing. Not much we can do about that. And then there's some proposals in the BMC that we're proposing to change. So I will jump into those.
It's working on my screen. It's not working up there. Sorry. I'm going to stop sharing and try it again.
I'm having flashbacks to 2020 right now.
Now I'm trying to go backwards.
All right, there we go. So as I said, we're going to have some changes to the BMC that we're going to recommend. And if we can go to the next slide. And we're, as the city manager explained, we're not asking for any action at this time. All right, here's an overview of the changes that are going to be made. The routine changes to the BMC to address the changes from the 2018 codes to the 2021 codes, which are set to become effective on March 15th. They were already adopted on July 1st of last year. And then we have a new code that is coming to us on the western side of Washington, the International Wildland Urban Interface Code. So that will be a new code that we are administering. And then we have four items, as I said, in the BMC that we're given recommendations on. The time limitation to pick up your plans and pay fees. Change the Board of Appeals to hearing examiner.
The last two would be residential fire sprinklers for adult family homes and addressing onsite fueling here in the city of Bothell.
So yeah, this is a new code to western Washington. It's been very complex. I won't get into any details on that, but it is set to become effective with the other codes. It will affect construction of structures, and hopefully the mapping that is created is going to help identify those properties affected and those ones that are not. All right, so when we, a while back when we, you know, did paper plan review, we had some projects that went through the whole review process, and then they didn't pick up their plans, pay their fees or anything. And so we started a, we put something in the BMC back then that gave them a time limitation to pick up their plans and pay their fees to start the project. We don't need that anymore because we are all electronic. So it's just getting rid of that. It has been a little bit of a roadblock for some people, you know. And the only reason why they had to follow it was because it's in the code and it really didn't serve any, serve anyone any good. And then the other one is removing the Board of Appeals and moving that to hearing examiner, which several cities around us have already done. And it's so much easier than a Board of Appeals. You have to get an architect, contractor, various different people in the construction industry to listen to what the appeal is about.
Okay, the adult family home language is new in the 21 fire code. Quick definition, adult family home, a residential home, housing up to six people with at least one licensed caregiver. The state allows, allows up to two extra folks to live in the house. If you jump through some hoops and meet some requirements, you can have up to eight folks in the home. The code also says that seven or eight occupants, you have to sprinkler the home. So what I'm hoping to pass here, not, not tonight, but eventually, would be any amount of folks living in the adult family home, based on the ambulatory issues of the folks that normally live in these houses. In addition to the fact that, I'll throw out one sprinkler stat for you, 85% greater chance of surviving a house fire if you have residential sprinklers. So the lack of ambulatory issues in these houses with the general demographic that lives there, in addition to the survivability with sprinklers, to me, makes this code pretty important, this amendment pretty important.
I have a quick question on that. Would that also apply to, like, a group home living situation?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So not necessarily seniors, but also people with disabilities. Okay, cool. Thank you.
This next amendment is regarding onsite mobile filling, mobile fuel filling, a newer concept. It's catching on. For, for the fire department, this is more, I'm requesting that we don't adopt this code in the IFC. It's more of an administrative issue for fire prevention. We have no permits for this particular exercise. We have no fees. And quite frankly, the folks in fire prevention aren't trained up to inspect this particular process. Equally as important, if not maybe even a bigger issue, would be the environmental impacts. And I've asked Boyd Benson to speak a little bit, if he could, on the environmental impacts of mobile fueling. Thanks, Boyd.
Good evening. Good to speak with you tonight. So we actually were approached by a mobile fueling concern to request, could this be utilized in the city of Bothell? And what we did is we went back through our surface water design manual, and there were some pretty strict requirements for these type of things. So what was being proposed by the, you know, mobile fueling may be good in some situations, but what was being proposed is we'll show up to your parking lot, we'll put down some protective mats if we need it, and we'll fill up the vehicles. And it became very clear when discussing this with them that they are looking at large amounts of fuel. I think we were quoted up to 200 gallons a week, which doesn't really comply with their surface water design manual. When you look at site use, if you exceed 1,500 gallons of fuel on a site, it's a high-use site, and it has oil control and a bunch of other BMPs that are required. So when you're looking at, in doing this type of fueling at an existing parking lot adjacent to critical areas with storm infrastructure that may have been installed back in the 90s, which was the case, with very little flow control or water quality, to actually have that occur and follow our manual, which is a requirement for the National Pollution Discharge and Liberation System permit we have, you'd have to retrofit that site with oil control and the rest. And so we brought that forward to these folks and, and explained that. And it became pretty clear pretty quickly that that may not be too feasible for this type of use. Even with that said, you'd still have to have a spill prevention pollution plan in place. There'd have to be inspections. When we see these type of uses at construction sites, we have construction inspectors out there quite often. They have to report to the Department of Ecology with respect to their permits. And none of that's being included in this type of discussion. So once again, we brought these questions forward to the folks that came with these questions and, or requests for mobile fueling, and we haven't heard back yet. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. So we're really looking at, can we inspect to ensure that there are no environmental impacts? And what would have to occur for this to, to be used without impacting our environment?
Can I ask a quick question since we have Boyd in the hot seat? This, this doesn't apply to home heating oil being delivered?
No, no, that's, that's an allowed use. And this is, think of a, when you talk about a high-use site, think about maybe a distribution facility where they have onsite fueling. fueling.
Okay.
And, but that's, that's.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were understood on that, we understood that. I watched a report recently on areas, not Bothell, I think maybe the state of California, where there's been problems with carjacking of people at gas stations. And someone has created a business, which was, is great, where they will come to you and fill up your gas tank, gas tank. But the environmental piece is a little scary. So Bothell PD, keep doing the great work. And hopefully that's never going to be a, something that the people of Bothell will be clamoring for. It will just stay safe and sane here in Bothell. But I did want to clarify the home heating oil. So thank you.
Just to clarify, so I know there's no, there's no action today, but are you saying you don't want to have anything related to this on, you know, in the?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
That's correct.
And then, so how, so is this kind of fueling not allowed today? Or like, how, how does it?
The IFC allows it. There are several jurisdictions that are going through the same process. We are discussing not allowing it based on the exact same reason.
Oh, so then there won't be volume, or what is it? The mobile, this won't be, like in city of Bothell, we won't, nobody can do that. You have to go elsewhere to do this.
Correct.
But also that means the site cannot even exist here.
Correct. So the, the, the mobile fueling concept is really more of a fleet. They should really call it mobile fleet filling. It's, you know, the businesses in Bothell that have like the 12 trucks out in the parking lot. That's really what it's meant to serve, I think, if that adds some clarity.
How does it work for the, like the school district with the buses and all that?
Go ahead.
So just to comment on that, when you think about a commercial fueling facility, next time you're at the gas station, you'll notice there's a cover so rain doesn't get there. There are drains on the side. So if there is any spill, it'll get to the drains. And then there's oil water separators and other mechanisms with respect to water quality. So even like the North Shore School District has those type of, of things in place. And that's, that's where we're trying to, that's kind of the, it's not the 1,500 gallon per year threshold. It's, it's more, this is what you'd see if someone was doing this every day. But once again, 200 gallons a week isn't a small amount, in our opinion. And so there should be measures in place.
The school district has a facility in Canyon Park. So you know where the Pacific Medical Center is?
I know. I was wondering why is that?
So they just go to it.
But this one is saying that site cannot exist in the first place.
No, this would be a service where they would bring them the fuel where they are. And we're saying, yikes, no, thank you, if we all agree.
For, for example, the truck in the photo would go to pick a business and, you know, Acme Truck Supply in, in the business park.
Is it enough to just not expressly allow this? Do we need to institute a ban?
Go ahead.
So, so on the IFC, it says may allow this with a permit process and the rest. So to consider this, I think you'd have to understand that we'd need a process because if, if it is allowed, I think people would, and this is more, nevermind. If, if, yeah. If there's a may, then I think the city has to consider it. And then if we consider it, does that, does that mean we think it's a good idea? And also do we want to expend the effort and the planning and the rest to get a permit inspection process? So instead of saying a may, it's like, no, we're not considering this as, as in the city of Bothell this time. Does that help?
The, the language in this proposed BMC would be pretty clear. Mobile fueling is not allowed in the city of Bothell.
Could we add what Councilmember Dodd just said and say, yikes, no, thank you?
All right. This is more of a question than a opinion. So when I talk to my kids, I tell them there's like two kinds of no's. There's like the no never, like I will not allow, I will not consider that. And then there's the yes when, which means it's a no right now. But when these conditions are met, it could be a yes. Are you wanting to pursue any of the permitting, like list of, of what conditions would be allowed, like would be acceptable for this practice to exist in Bothell?
Because the potential environment impacts, the staff's not recommending at this time. If, if someone wants to go to the effort to, to fuel a fleet, maybe it's a facility they install following standards and requirements with, it's not just stormwater, then it's ecology for something like you'd see at the North Shore School District fueling facility or a major Amazon hub or something like that. And then it's, it's a set thing. There's just, there's too much variability to have a vehicle pull up and is the vehicle parked in a, that they're fueling in the right spot? Is there a berm? Is there a cover? Is there oil control? Or is it now over here next to this storm drain that goes to a creek? And so that's, that's where we're trying to get to. But, but no, I mean, if someone wanted to put the effort in and, and develop a facility that, that could, that allows this, that's, that's kind of, that's following all the steps. It's not saying we'd like to do this in this parking lot and we're going to make sure we bring some absorbent mats in case we spill.
Yeah. So this is saying that like we don't, we're not even going to open up a permitting process that would say under, this is allowable under these conditions. There's just, we would just say there's no conditions. Okay. So this is a no never. Got it. Thank you.
I'm also on team yikes, no, thank you. And like if we want to go harder, like Councilmember Curd did, that's fine with me too. But if we don't need to, then we shouldn't.
And just one addition, there is a no never because they're exceeding the 1,500 gallons and the rest of the impacts. You'll see, if, if people follow the correct rules at construction sites, you can actually bring in a truck and service your, your vehicles. But there are all these rules. You do it here, you do it at this time. There's inspections and there's reporting. This isn't, this isn't what's being asked at this time.
That's a fueling station. And this is not.
Correct.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions and some of the other ones, should we, are we, are we done with Boyd? Cool. Thanks, Boyd.
Boyd.
Yeah. But I'm disappointed there's usually more pictures.
Thanks.
Yeah. The, so I think the appeal process absolutely makes sense. And my question is kind of similar for the adult family homes and Wildland Urban Interface Code. What cost does this add to the construction of a new adult family home that's below eight units? And do we know roughly what kind of additional monthly cost that it would require to make construction feasible?
So I can, I did a little bit of research on the cost of the sprinklers. It's roughly $2 a square foot to add sprinklers to any new construction. I could not get a, I could not get a reasonable quote for retroing in a sprinkler system on an existing home that didn't already have them.
And that's something that we're not requiring though through this, correct?
We're not requiring an existing adult family home that's in business already and licensed to install sprinklers. But if someone wants to start a new adult family home in an existing house that doesn't, then yes.
Or increase the beds.
Or increase the bed, yes.
Okay.
So I, I just couldn't get that quote from the contractors, but $2 for a new, a new system.
Okay, probably double that for, for retrofitting.
I was going to guess a double as well. Probably $4 a square foot would be a good guess.
Okay. This is where I should know what cost per square foot construction looks like right now. What percentage is that? Anybody guesses? Yeah. No, I mean, this absolutely makes sense, like especially when you have people that have ambulatory struggles that are underneath there. And I mean, that 85% number, that's for everybody, right? That's not for people that have trouble moving around.
That's all of us.
The, like anytime we add a restriction on a particular housing type, it increases the cost of that to build, which basically just drives the cost of it up. And housing costs too much money already. So I'm, I'm loathe to do that. And in this case, I think it makes sense because life is complicated and nuance is a thing. Same question about the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Does this apply to all residential construction regardless of the type? And if so, how much extra does it cost?
It applies to every single building that's proposed to be built.
Okay.
If, if they are in a intermixed or interface zone, that's really hard to explain. It's something like this. It, there's, there's certain areas that the Department of Natural Resources have identified as meeting the definition of intermixed. And so we have a bunch of, if you look at their map, we have a bunch of yellow clouds throughout the city that, that identify those areas. And then we're working with GIS to put a map overlay with streets and property lines and that on there. So, yeah. So we don't, we don't really know increased costs or anything because this is a, this is a state directive at this time.
Okay. Oh, I see. So this isn't something that is outside of what we're required to do? Oh, okay. In, in that case, I have no questions about it. Somebody else's decision.
Ken, I'd like to leap in with just a couple of small things. Anytime you talk, I, I'm not a computer geek, but I love GIS maps. And anytime you get them up and fancier and more information, that's fantastic. The, for mobility issues, I feel your heart there and I very much appreciate that. It's, I think there was a building fire not too long ago, not here, but in another part of the country where there were people who, not everybody got out with mobility issues. And I can't imagine the terror for that. And then my, so thank you for that. And I'm sitting here thinking, how could we encourage people to retrofit? I don't know how you do it, but it would be great if we could. My only question is, because it's no longer paper and it's online, is there still a time limit for the fee payment that folks have to adhere to?
Not under that, that wouldn't be under that section of the BMC. There would still be the 18-month timeframe of your permit application. We would still have that. The issue was that once you, once your permit application was done and you were notified that you were ready, you know, were done, were ready for you to start your project, that's when that clock would start and they would have six months to pick everything up, pay fees.
Perfect.
And everything. And so we're just going to do away with that and stick with the 18 month, or at least that's our recommendation.
Okay. I think I could live with that, but I'm not the ones who are holding people accountable. If you can live with it, I can live with it.
I can live with it.
Okay, thanks.
I don't want to belabor anything, but the Wildland Urban Interface Code, when we ask applicants to add on additional things that are kind of procedural, it would be really great if we could develop a citywide kind of template that it makes it really easy for applicants to see what the requirements are, see how they can meet them, and just submit it on a template form rather than having to, you know, dredge something up from one architect does one way, another does it the other way. We can standardize that. I think it would go a long way to helping small development community, large development community, mom and pops, to really understand what the implications of these different codes are that are coming down from the state.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Helping the public with this is going to be very important. And through mybuildingpermit.com, we are creating some checklists and some tip sheets to, to help the people. And so that's going to apply to all of those jurisdictions that are part of MVP. So that, and then we are building the Wildland Urban Interface Code review criteria into our checklists for all of our permit types. That's the plan. I, I will add one thing. I wasn't going to mention this, but I will, is that the, the state, the state isn't, is still, they still have a legislative piece of this that may change all of what the urban, the, we call it the wooey code, what the, what the Wildland Urban Interface Code is going to do. And it may turn from a shall to a may. So we may be coming to you later saying, do we want to do this? And, and that, that's not what we're doing now, but I just wanted to kind of plant that in your minds.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Curd, kind of to the discussion from earlier when we had public comment, like the more we can do to make this simpler and predictable for people. And I mean, I feel like that makes it simpler and easier for staff and the amount of time we spend on it as well. I think the better off that we all are. It turns out when you, when you run for city council, like you barely know what a permit is. And by the time you're done running a campaign, you've heard about permits a lot. So, so anything we can do to ease that burden on both our staff and our community, I'm all in for.
Absolutely. We will keep that in mind as we're building the process with MVP and integrating everything into our permit processes.
Awesome. Thank you.
When that's done, could we get info on how it works? Like I'm probably not going to build anything. I'm not going for a while, but I would love to know more about that from your side. Because I think we get complaints and we're like, that sounds bad, but what is the process supposed to look like? And I think that will help us talk to people about it.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, yeah, we can, we can get that information for you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're adjourned.